Yeah, I don't hear it. We have love. She's not starting. He says, you didn't say she's not starting. He said, I can't. That's up now. Oh, he said, she's waiting. I can't do that. It is a still, still alive.
See the council members up on screen? Right. Yes, it's a green arrow on audio control. Join, join audio in Esla. And then you got failed to detect your microphone, please make sure the microphone is properly connected. Uh, no. Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, but it, it.
A process, it could be a committee of the council that would begin the recommendations to choose the top two or three search firms to bring before the entire council for some, for a decision. Do you agree with that?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are what I thought were the major decisions, but I'm wondering if there's anything else that you think that we need to do or today to get us moving.
I think those are the, the most important decisions for today to move the process along.
Okay. Colleagues, um, do you all agree with that? Does anyone have anything to add that I've missed in terms of the three decisions? Councilmember Freeman?
Just the job description.
Okay, anything particular about it that you wanted to comment on?
I, I mean, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we did get it updated. I noticed, um, the range of areas or, or other city or town, um, descriptions that were available and there were a few things that I think would be helpful.
Recommendations to choose.
I'm, I'm just noting from the Chapel Hill, um, job description, they're about, I think it is, hold on, I have it up right behind the zone. Which was probably not a good idea, should have pulled this different. So the Chapel Hill job description, the about the organization, I thought was helpful if we're trying to do a national search beyond North Carolina, folks that aren't familiar with Durham. And then, um, and the Greensboro job description, the building public private partnerships as an additional requirement, I thought that was a good idea to have. And in the Raleigh job description, the summary, um, I'm not sure if that fits for the, sorry, I'm trying to get back to the Durham one. But the summary in the Raleigh job description looked like it could be something we might have a few words, not as many, but just a few sentences about, similar to the about the organization. And those were my thoughts.
Thank you. I think what I'd like to do, and we'll come back to that because that's important. I think what I'd like to do first is take up what I think is a threshold question of whether or not we want an RFP process. And when I looked at the calendar, um, that you provided Ms. Youngblood, it seemed like with an RFP process, especially with the holidays, we really wouldn't be able to get going on our search until really maybe February of next year.
That is correct.
And that concerned me. I think that's a long time. And so, uh, I think that the, you've identified, I think, a, a good number of firms. And I certainly thought that among them, there would be a search firm, uh, or several search firms that would be, uh, you know, good search firms for us to hire. So I wanted to take up that question with the council first and ask folks, uh, do you feel the need for an RFP process? Or are you comfortable with a, with the council choosing from among the, um, from among the, um, the, the list that, uh, was generated by HR? And I see, uh, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good morning, everyone. Firstly, let me thank Regina for the incredible job, uh, that she's done thus far. All of the materials were so helpful, um, in kind of framing the conversation and establishing thresholds and, and touchstones and, uh, and benchmarks for me. So thank you for that. Um, and I think, uh, Mayor, you're right that with the ones that we have already provide, they provide a robust, uh, menu for us to choose from. I, however, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the RFP process because as I think about it, for me, the only virtue, uh, in going with the list that we have is expediency. And I don't feel a particular sense of rush, uh, to make this decision. I think the gravity of this decision is such that it's probably one of, if not the most, one of the most important decisions we'll make as a council. I'm extremely comfortable with, with the talent we have that's going into the, the manager's office and Wanda Page. I don't, it's October now, I don't think, uh, you know, going through the holidays in February, giving all that's going on is really, um, you know, that, that, that pressing, uh, uh, amount of time for me. I mean, so for me, the only virtue in not going with RFP is expediency. And I personally don't feel any rush, uh, given the level of talent we have, um, in the manager's chair or will have in the manager's chair in the interim period. The other thing, uh, with the RFP process, I remember one of the, the selling points, uh, when we were shopping for 505 West Chapel Hill Street, not to be so strict in the parameters is to see what's out there. Uh, and RFP may very well jog us or, or prompt us to think about some things that we didn't even think about, uh, in our parameters and establishing criteria, uh, for the manager. So with the RFP coupled with the list that we already have, I think that would just provide us with an embarrassment of wealth, uh, uh, in terms of, uh, options and, and moving forward. So just for me, I'm not in any particular rush and I don't feel any particular, you know, rush and any deadline would be self-imposed. Um, and I'm, you know, I, I don't know why I would, you know, impose on myself, uh, given the level of, uh, the gravity of this decision. So I'm, I'm in favor of an RFP with respect for the incredible, incredibly robust, um, set of options that we have in front of us now. I think it would just be more robust with the RFP, uh, so that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Other colleagues? Uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Uh, I don't feel strongly either way. I feel comfortable with the list that we have and think that we could make a, um, a good choice with that list. My, I would have a slight preference for, uh, just picking a group off the list, not necessarily, um, just for expediency, but because I feel comfortable with the, um, with the list that we have and I think that we could get a good firm from that list. Um, but if folks feel strongly about doing an RFP, I would say that I don't, I don't feel as strongly about, um, not doing one. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the, with just choosing from the list that we have, um, but I'm happy to go with the will of the group if other folks feel an RFP is necessary.
Let me just, let me tell you my concern about the time. When I look at this schedule and I think that we won't have a new manager in place if we have an RFP until probably November of next year. That seems like a really long time to me. I completely agree, uh, with Councilmember Milton that we have a, a great interim. I'm very happy, uh, with the situation we're in. But I don't, you know, what worries me is that the, you know, uh, you're talking 13 months. That seems like a really long time for a search like this and, uh, that, that's my concern. I don't know if there are any ways to, you know, speed that up if we had an RFP process. I don't know if that's possible. We could maybe hear from Ms. Youngblood about that.
So with the RFP, you do have the option of requesting a, um, an exception from the Office of Equity and Inclusion to shrink the amount of time that the RFP has to be posted. So you could post it for as few as seven days. Uh, taking the RFP process completely off is probably going to save you anywhere from one to two months of time in the search. There are some other areas that we've listed in our, you know, proposed timeline for you that you could choose to shorten the time because this is a guideline for you to follow. There might be things that we did not think about that we put in, that we did not put into the schedule that you actually want to insert. And there are some places where you might be able to do some of this work concurrently. So if time is of the essence and of concern, then refining the timeline is something that can be done.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Caballero?
Yeah, I'm just, so I'm as well kind of agnostic. I felt that the table that was provided by Regina, which was really helpful about the pros and cons for an RFP. Um, I felt like there were more pros to using an RFP process other than the timeline. That was the only kind of sticky point for me when I read through that. You know, I, I think that there's lots of qualified, uh, potential executive search firms of the list that have already, that's already been provided. But when I looked through the kind of pros and cons, it helped kind of clarify my thinking around that. And I think part of it that was helpful was the transparency piece, that because it's a RFP process, it is more transparent for the public. Um, and that felt compelling. If there's a way to, and I, but I also recognize the, the lengthening of the process and, and the concern there. So that's where I'm at. Um, I think both are, there's a little bit of a there and I think they're both, I, legitimate concerns. The RFP process, at least from the pros and cons table, seemed to be a more transparent process, but it does lengthen it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Freeman?
Uh, thank you. I, I would also say, I think, uh, Councilmember Caballero covered it in, in acknowledging that the timeline that was laid out and the pros and cons kind of led me towards the RFP as well. And I would appreciate the opportunity to, to, um, to keep the transparency, um, as, as present as possible. And so that was the kind of deciding factor. I would say I'm not as, um, I'm probably a little bit more, uh, leaning on or prefer the, the RFP side of this. And, and that it's, it's, um, interesting to go through, uh, the process, um, on a nonprofit side and then, and, and, and different areas. And I definitely can see how, you know, a little bit more can get shook, shaken out. I will say that the one to two months difference between RFP and, uh, and actually not doing the RFP leads me even more towards the RFP because, you know, those 60 days could make a, a huge difference. But I do think that we have a really good, uh, we have a really good interim and, and Wanda and the team with Regina and Bo and, um, Keith. And I mean, we have a really good team in place to cover us through the year. So I'm not as concerned about the timeline.
All right. Any other comments? Well, I can see that I'm, uh, Pierce, Councilmember Freeline?
Yeah, sorry, um, getting some food and don't want to eat in front of everyone. Um, yeah, I just want to say that, um, I, I, I agree with, uh, uh, Counselor Middleton, uh, with the, the merits of having an RFP, both for public trust, accountability, and also we just did this, uh, I mean, Councilmember Freeman was on the, uh, yesterday, the previous day on this equity training and, and talked a lot about race equity and implicit bias and, you know, I just don't, it was information, some of it that I had already known and was kind of a refresher, but the extent to which, uh, our folks, folks out there, potential candidates may have, have sifted through even a very thorough process, uh, is, is kind of sitting on my mind and, and on my heart. And I don't want, uh, I don't want to miss some of the magic and, and, and possibility that's out there that, uh, you know, that can come from a, a long process. And I guess my question about that is kind of speaking to your concern, uh, Mayor Shul, is, you know, is there something happening after February, you know, relative to the budget where it would be really, you know, like, I guess, understanding a little more about what the risk is? Because, I mean, our, our interim, as folks have said, is just awesome. And I've had a couple of conversations, uh, there and feel, and feel just abundantly confident. And so I, I'm kind of like Counselor Middleton, I, I don't just share the same concern, uh, around. But I'm wondering if, you know, it's, I'm new to council, so I'm wondering if something's going to happen in March where it's like so important that we have to have somebody in place by then, uh, you know, relative to some city council process or internal, maybe the, the retreat or something that I'm not aware of where it would be really important.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Yeah, let me just say, okay, clearly I'm in the minority, that's okay, that happens. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy to go with an RFP process. Let me tell you my concern. I think that the thing about an interim is, um, any interim, even the best interim, is, uh, keeping us on the course that we're on. And I think that we have so many things that I think that we want to do, that we need to be, that we need to be initiating, the whole, you know, I'm, I want to get, um, as soon as possible, uh, the right person here with the right vision and to help us move that forward. It's not anything about March, it's something about 13 months before we have that person. And so, um, uh, I, I, I'm happy to go with the RFP process and I certainly agree with you all that it has its advantages. I am just really concerned with that timeline. And so what I would like to do is figure out ways to shorten that timeline, uh, if we have an RFP process. I don't think our community really wants us to have an, you know, if they know, if they knew, they wouldn't really want us to have a 13 month period before we have a new manager. I don't think that's, you know, what most, most searches are like or should be like. So those are my thoughts. But it's, uh, let's, well, let's go with the RFP. Um, I think that's clearly the will of the council and I'm certainly able to support that. Councilmember Caballero?
I just was curious, how long was the, how long did the last search take for the city manager? At some point it was shared and I don't remember it.
Fortunately, I don't have that information. Let me get that.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, that's why I was like, I don't. I, I will say, Mr. Mayor, that 11 months or 13 months, I, I also don't know if bringing somebody in at 11 months or, or they, they're still going to need to get their bearings under them. So making major decisions in the first 30 days, I wouldn't anticipate them being able to do that either, so.
No, I wouldn't either. But, you know, if they started in seven months from now versus 11 months from now, I think we'd be, our ship would be sailing. Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for whatever it's worth, I mean, all, all of your observations, concerns resonate deeply with me. I, I don't know if the 13 months is, is, is gospel or Torah, uh, but, but whatever, listening to, uh, Regina, it seems like we've got some room to be agile and kind of can tweak the timetable. So while I'm committed to the RFP, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not just totally checked out with, you know, whenever it happens, it happens. I'm also committed to being, you know, doing as expediently as possible. Um, and certainly if we can do it before 13 months, my sense from Regina is that we can do the RFP and still do it within a, you know, not over a year from now. So I just want you to know I'm committed, and I think we all are, to, to doing it as expediently as possible. Um, so I just want to go on record with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Youngblood, any thoughts?
I, I think that there, there are ways to shave time off of the schedule. And if timing is important, you know, the commitment of your time and schedules to the process could help move things along. You know, but I understand with the holidays, we put some considerations in the memo about things that could impact the timeline. So any, any delay, it affects subsequent steps. And so of course, this is a framework, it's not gospel at all. You have the flexibility to move things around, take things out, add things to it. Uh, but, you know, working back from maybe when you want someone to be able to start could help to refine the schedule.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, let me just say, I don't think something we ought to do is a seven day RFP process. If we're going to have the RFP process and make it work, we've got to have a longer time. But I hear you. Um, and I think Councilmember Reese has a comment.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank my colleagues for all their comments. And I think had I been in charge of making the decision by myself, I probably would have gone with something more along the lines of what the mayor suggested. But, um, that was before hearing all of your outstanding concerns about. But, um, that was before hearing all of your outstanding concerns about moving forward without an RFP. And I think ultimately I have trust in the staff we have in place to, um, to give effect to the will of the council. I guess the biggest issue is in the next budget. Um, and I think, you know, it's going to be up to us to push whatever changes, uh, programmatic, uh, differences, uh, funding priorities that we want to see. And I know this administration will, uh, will execute that. Uh, so I'm happy to go along with the RFP. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. It seems like the second, um, threshold decision that we need to make is some sort of process. Um, Ms. Youngblood, you talked about the council being able to, you know, our time being important. And I wonder if you think it would be a good idea for us to form a council committee to work with you, um, both, you know, to think about the schedule, uh, as well as to, once we have the RFP process, to do some initial evaluation, uh, before the entire council, uh, hears the options. What, what do you think about that?
I think that that would be helpful.
All right. Colleagues, are you good with that idea? Okay. Councilmember Middleton.
Sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am good with it philosophically. I, 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 there's seven of us and in my experience, that basically is a committee. I mean, that, that's a good number of people that's a working committee. With this particular decision, I, I just don't know, um, if I want to shop any of this out. I mean, we, we're meeting right now in special session, the seven of us to discuss this process. And listen, I explicitly trust all of my colleagues and, and, you know, I know they'll do the vetting, that, that's not the issue. But I think on this particular decision, um, I'm inclined to be hands-on at every step, uh, and every step of this process from soup to nuts. And, um, again, you know, just in my experience, usually a good sized committee is about five to seven people. So I even feel this way sometimes when we talk about rules committees as well, and I haven't ever intoned this. But I think in this particular decision, us kind of having our hands on every step of the process would be my preference. But of course, I, I'll bow to the will of the body. So I, you know, I'd, I'd like us all to be involved in selecting the firm and kind of the vetting process like we're doing right now today. Uh, particularly, uh, on this, this level of decision. But that's just me. So I'm, I'm anxious to listen to the others.
Councilmember Caballero.
My understanding is that the decisions would be made by all seven folks, like the executive search firm would be chosen by seven of us. It would be the, um, kind of behind the scenes, you know, digging into the RFP process to shave off some time, those kinds of things. That would be the, the committee-based work. But maybe I'm wrong.
That's what I anticipated.
If I might, uh, with Council Caballero, and thank you. And if that is the case, then, then, yeah, I'll certainly strike my comments. My, my, my understanding was that if, if there's eight, if we get RFPs and there's eight, like high, high value or high potential RFPs, and then the committee would be tasked with paring that down to maybe three or four, and then bringing those three or four to the council, um, is what I'm talking about. I, I'd like us to be involved from the eight is, is all I'm saying at this level of, uh, uh, decision-making. But of course, if, if that's the will of the, the body, um, then of course I'll yield to it. But I'd like to be involved at, at every step of the process was my concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I, I definitely want to make sure that I'm very vocal in stating that I want to be involved in every step of this process. And so if there is a committee, I would like to be a part of that committee because I know that my schedule is, is probably the hardest of us, of most of us. I want to make sure that I'm, um, involved in however the timeline is set and also in however the RFPs are set, whatever else is moving forward from this. Cause it is a huge decision to be, to be made.
Thank you. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that as far as RFP, you know, a way to do that is you just create a scorecard and then everyone is, you see who, how everything was ranked. And so then there can be conversation around those recommendations so that there's never, uh, you know, even if you're putting our recommendation as two or three or whatever, that people see the full process.
Yeah. I mean, let me, let me just be clear. Everybody needs to see all the firms that apply. And there's no question about that. I, I don't, you know, every, this is, this is a super important decision and nobody's going to get locked out of it. And I think you all know that. I don't, I think, I, I hope you all have enough trust in me and in the processes we run, uh, and in the rest of the council to know that that's the way we do business. We don't always agree, but everybody gets access and everybody gets to hear and everybody gets a voice. So I want to make that clear. I also think that a small group of people that can efficiently work with Regina, uh, to do some of the things is really important if we're going to move this process along. I don't think we're going to be able to get together as often as we want, all seven of us. And I don't think that all seven of us will be an efficient body for doing some of the things we need to do. I'm not sure even what those things are all, but I know that Regina will, will need some guidance and support. She said it would be helpful and I think it would. Uh, other thoughts? Councilmember Middleton and Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think that was a bullet in search of a target. Let, let me be clear. No one is concerned about being locked out or access issue. And, and this is in no way about being concerned about being locked out of the process. It, it, you know, I just want to reiterate, it, it was, you know, just simply and directly about, um, being involved in every step of the process. Not because we're being locked out, but because of the gravity of the decision. Um, I absolutely, I think seven people are a small number of people. But again, whatever this, this, this body decides, I will certainly, uh, yield to it. But, but no one, um, in this assembly should think for one second that there's any concern about being locked out of the process. We demonstrated our inclusiveness, I think, over the years. So, so I just want to be clear about that. There's no concern about that whatsoever. Um, and I want to underscore that, put an exclamation point, put a ribbon on it and then do fireworks with it. So I just want to be clear about that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I would, I would echo Councilmember Middleton's sentiment. I would say that my concern, uh, lies in, uh, the area of race equity and acknowledging, as Councilmember Pierce Freeland mentioned, um, there, I have had some concerns about issues of race equity and conversations with my, uh, with staff and with, uh, with events that have occurred over the past. And so I do have a high, um, concern around how questions are set, what, what questions are sent and not just the scorecard, but actually what's on the scorecard. And so all of those parts and pieces, I would love to have, um, a lot more, uh, confidence in, but I don't at this point. So I just want to make sure that I do voice that concern.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, I would just like to say if we do go with the committee forum, um, I would like to be on it as well.
Thank you. Okay. Not hearing a lot of consensus. I'd like to hear some more, like to hear from Councilmember Reese, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Freeland, if any of you all would like to make yourself heard. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think there are, uh, good reasons to, uh, with, around both approaches. But, Mr. Mayor, I think I found your reasoning around, uh, agility a, a little bit more persuasive. Um, and I think as long as we pick, um, three people who I think adequately reflect many of the concerns that have been raised. I don't have a ton of concern about a, about a subcommittee. But I think ultimately getting, I, I think when you said the logistical challenges of getting all seven of us together, you know, we've had a series of special meetings that we've been trying to schedule around various topics and that's been a challenge. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, you know, I, I want to acknowledge that and say that we, you know, while I, while I agree with the RFP process, I think whatever we can do to continue to be agile in this process will add value. Um, and so, um, I, I think creating a small group of us to do some of the blocking and tackling makes a lot of sense. But obviously, um, I think all of us need to be copied on the work that's been doing, that's being done around that. All of us need to have access to the source documents and have input into, uh, as Councilmember Freeman said, the questions that are asked, um, and the process that is developed. I think, um, I also trust Regina and that committee to, to know when we've reached a decision point and then to come back to the council, um, with, for the entire council for the decisions that we need to be involved in. And so that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, any, any Councilmember, okay, Mayor Protem.
I agree. I think that's a good process, um, a small subcommittee keeping everybody in the loop.
Same. Councilmember Freeland, you agree? Okay. It sounds like we have, um, a majority of the council and maybe a consensus around the, uh, subcommittee. I will appoint the committee. I need to think about it a little bit. And, uh, I will let you all know, um, my thoughts about that very soon. Councilmember Freeman.
Just to note that, um, in the appointment being, coming from you, that that is exactly the type of equity issue that I'm concerned about. And so just note that that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Why don't you be a little more explicit about that then?
Uh, I mean, I think that we could all make a decision on who could be the subcommittee with, uh, I think Councilmember Caballero said it, I said it. And I don't know if anyone else, if one of the other folks are interested, but I think that's enough for us to have a subcommittee.
I don't. Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, I just acknowledge what you say, Councilmember Freeman, but also the mayor is the chair of this board and the voters decided that. So I'm comfortable with him having that power.
Councilmember Middleton.
I, I'm going to thank both Council Caballero and Council Freeman. It's a council manager form of government. We only have three employees, uh, and the city manager is one of them. So I, I think each of us reserve the right to insert ourselves into any, uh, part of this process, um, you know, that we deem fit. The voters decided that as well. So, but with respect to, to, I have total confidence in his merit. He's been doing, he's been choosing committees for a long time. Um, and I don't envy his position, but I think all of us, almost to a person, have indicated a desire to be on that, uh, subcommittee. So I hope he's got a good bottle of bourbon and, and a warm blanket to make the decision, uh, with. Um, but with that, I am comfortable that whoever subcommittee is, I think we've already intoned that we'll be kept fully abreast. Uh, and as, you know, one of the seven bosses of this hire, each of us reserve the right to insert ourselves into this process, uh, whenever and wherever we see fit. So I just want to say that. Good luck, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I just want to say I'm happy to not be on the subcommittee.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Just a response, um, I think it's, um, it's a miss on any way to think that it's about the mayor specifically. And it's not an underscore of who you are. It's specific to the way that the systems work and operate. And so yes, to what Councilmember Caballero mentioned, but, um, I think that I'm, I'm explicitly sharing how it operates. And so just acknowledging that there are many subcommittees that have happened and I've not been a part of any of them. And I know that it's specific to my schedule, but the conversation's never been had. And so I want to make sure that that's clear upfront. Thank you.
Well, maybe that's a discussion you and I could have. I'd like to hear more about that. Okay. Any other thoughts? Let me just, um, in order for the, the committee to be not have to have its meetings, um, noticed and so forth, it'll need to be three people, not four people. Uh, so that's another factor. So I'll give all that some consideration. Councilmember Reese.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add in my two cents that I'm completely confident that you'll pick three people who adequately represent diversity views in the council and will help us move forward in an expeditious manner. Thank you.
Thank you. I will do my best. Let me just say again. All the concerns that have been raised are extremely legitimate and important. And, you know, we have all, you know, my hope, my really deep, deep hope is that when we come to this decision, that we're going to have seven of us that agree that we have found a great city manager. And that we're all going to be able to feel great about the process we went through. And that all our, especially our diversity concerns, our racial equity concerns, our gender equity concerns, that all those are going to have been fully met. That we're going to be able to have really gotten, um, the public participation that we want, that all those things are going to have happened. And then we're going to come to the end of the process feeling good about the process and, and feeling like we are, we can be together behind a great manager. The council is not always unanimous and that's good. We don't need to be unanimous. But I think this decision, I'm very hopeful that if not unanimous at the end at our first choice, that we will be unanimous to be, to be able to be behind the person that ends up being our first choice. Uh, and, you know, if we have, we may end up with two or three great people and we can't all quite agree on them. But when it comes down to it, that we're all going to be able to get behind a great city manager. And I'm, I promise you all that I will do my best to make sure it's super inclusive. Um, not everybody wants to be on this committee, can be on this committee. But this committee will really just be one that helps us move the process along. And, um, you know, I'm committed to everyone being fully informed. Okay. Now, um, I think that the next question is around a job description. Ms. Youngblood has sent us a number of good job descriptions. Councilmember Caballero sent us a, a job description, um, the Chicago, um, Chicago description. And I agree with what Councilmember Freeman said. I thought that of all the ones that, that Ms. Youngblood sent us, that the Chapel Hill one, I thought was by far the closest to the kind of thing that we want. It was much more, I thought, uh, descriptive of the kind of, it, it, it did a better job of describing the kind of person we want than I think just simply listing the, uh, the, um, the characteristic, you know, the capabilities that we were looking for. It, it did that, but it did more than that. So, um, I'm going to ask Ms. Youngblood what you think a good process would be, uh, in terms of moving forward, our, uh, the, this initial job description that we might share in the RFP.
And so, uh, you don't necessarily have to have the job description prepared for the RFP. That is something that you will want to have prepared when you meet with the search firm and they will help you to, to refine it. Uh, so basically for the RFP, you need some specifications around the kind of search firm that you're looking for and what you want them to be able to do. So suggesting that, you know, I would suggest that you have some questions specific, uh, to each firm that you want them to answer so that it would help you to make your decisions. You'd want to talk about potentially how you want to see the process unfold, whether or not you want public forum input and ask them how they would get you to the candidate that you're looking for. And that would be, you know, the components of the RFP.
How would we get to those, um, you, I'm, I'm sure that you can suggest, uh, Ms. Youngblood, those kinds of questions that we would want to ask. Uh, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And it, and once we have this committee, you could share them with the committee? The committee could vet them and then share them with the whole council for additional suggestions?
Yes.
Okay. So colleagues, how do you like that, uh, process? That Ms. Youngblood would, uh, come up with the, um, would think with the, uh, I, I, I guess, Ms. Youngblood, maybe it would be, you would actually provide us with the whole draft of the RFP. you would actually provide us with the whole draft of the RFP, and then we would, the committee could take a quick look at that and then share that with the whole council.
That, that is something that we can absolutely do.
Okay. What do you all think about that, colleagues? Are you good with that process? I see, I see one thumb up. I see three thumbs up. Okay. Everybody good? All right. I see, I think I see everybody, except for Mayor Protem, who's on her, on her camera off. Okay. But I think we have a solid council consensus around that. So, Ms. Youngblood, then you would, you would draft that RFP, and then we would, we would take it from there.
Okay.
Let's talk about what else we need to do. And Ms. Youngblood, I'll first ask you, what else do we need to do today? And then any, I want to ask then colleagues what your thoughts are about what we may have missed or anything on your mind. But let me start with Ms. Youngblood. And Mr. O'Donnell, also, I mean, I know your expertise is here and very, very important to us. I know you're going to be integral to this process. So if either of you all have any thoughts that you would like to add?
I don't have any thoughts that I'd like to add, but I would like Jim to, to show himself and close any gap that I might have left.
Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. We know you're going to be integral to this process, so thank you.
Thank you. I, I think that you have hit all the major points, at least that I could think of, about what you would need as far as moving forward to the next steps, which in particular is the RFP. I would think that one of the things that we could do that is concurrent would be if indeed you and the council and, and other entities that you might want to reach out to, again, the county, or, or I'm not sure exactly what other community organizations, but to try and figure out a little bit more about the, the details of what you're looking for in a, in a successful city manager, so that, as I said, when we do come to that point where you pick a vendor, we could kind of move forward with a, a job description very expeditiously.
Thank you. That was very helpful. And I think those are the kinds of things that we'll look for you all as guidance on to tighten the timeline some. All right. Colleagues, what are your thoughts? I think we've done the work that our staff wants us to do today, but I'm just wondering if there are other things on your mind about the search, about, you know, just anything that's on your mind that we ought to be taking up today, or just any observations that you want to make about the search for the city manager in general, and anything that is of concern to you, or that you just want to offer to your rest of your colleagues? Oh, sorry. That's okay. Councilmember Freeland, and then Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, just to note, something that I've been reflecting on is how significant this choice is, is going to be. And especially after going over the, the weeks and weeks of city manager Bonfield's retirement, with all the glowing things, and people who've been in the city government for decades had such wonderful things to say about him. And, and we know that there's a, there's a big, a big shoes to fill and a big role to play. And, and we, we're the seven folks that are going to be responsible for making this really big choice. So for me, you know, I think it, I, I'm going to be going into some meditative and spiritual practices. I don't know what, what everybody's, what kind of headspace, what gets you into a truly contemplative headspace. But I think that this, it has big spiritual implications for me about what's going to happen in the city of Durham. And, and again, I mean, as, as a, as a Durham native, it's, it's even mind-boggling to me to be able to sit at this table. I'm just sitting with the immense privilege and responsibility of this choice. And I, I take that, I take that very seriously. And I know my ancestors, you know, Anne Atwater, Polly Murray, they're watching me like, who are you going to pick? You know, make sure you make a good choice. You know, John Ho Franklin, Barbara Chubb, my dad, they're, they're with me and with us with this choice. So I would encourage everyone to consult your ancestors, you know, ask for their advice, for their guidance. You know, Reverend Moore, we got, we got a pastor on, on council. Go talk to the reverends. They go way back here in Durham, Brother Middleton. So that's all. I just want to, I just want to sit with the gravity and, and gratitude for, for this wonderful group of seven folks that I love and trust. And to the people of Durham, we will, we will do our best. Just wanted to let the folks of the Bull City know. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
I want to associate myself with my brother's comments. Thank you so much. I, and to that, in that same spirit, it was a very crystallizing moment for me this week. I, I attended the farewell parade on a Tuesday for Tom in front of City Hall. And it was, it was a celebratory moment, but I, I, at one point, it got real serious for me, because, you know, we're all, we all live in Durham, and we kind of, you know, when we're hanging out, we don't really, sometimes it's, it's, it's easy to forget just how many moving parts makes this city go. But at the parade, seeing the procession of all of the different departments, police, fire, general services, sanitation, I had like a, oh, snap moment. There, there really are a lot of things that fall under this city manager, and a lot of things that, that people depend upon in this city to help it go. You know, things that we have to do so people don't think about of their lives. And seeing that parade really crystallized for me just the gravity of this decision and how important a job this is for so many people in this city. So it was, it was celebratory, but it was sobering. So, so Pierce, I hear you, brother. And I couldn't think of a more talented, more committed, more cantankerous group of people to be making this decision with at this time in our city's history. So God bless us. God bless our city, and, and let's get to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. But I do want to say I can think of a lot more cantankerous seven people. We have our cantankerous moments, but I could, I could come up with, I bet you we could all come up with a big list. Okay. Other comments, colleagues? These were very helpful and, and, and important. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I would just like to add, I appreciate the insights that Councilmember Freeland, you know, makes us center on and making sure we're reflective. I want to make sure we're also reflective of, of the undevelry of the, of the, of how this all works, and acknowledging that there's so many people. I know I had a chance to visit with some of the folks in Solid Waste this morning, and some of the things that, that come up, I just, it just kind of, it kind of always bothers me that we miss it until it happens. And some of the questions I, I continue to send questions out to staff about, there, it just, there's, there's a lot that just gets missed. And until it, until it's a problem, no one notices it. And so I try to, try to get in front of it as much as possible. And I'm very confident that folks are doing the best that they can, and that there will always be areas that are missed. I just want to make sure that there's fewer of them. And so just noting, the losses that we take are, sometimes aren't replaceable. And so I just want to be mindful of that, that heavy heart that I carry into this, and, and knowing that I will be more present in this conversation. And regardless of whether the, every meeting that happens around this committee or the search needs to be noticed, I think it's important because everyone needs to know how seriously we're taking this, this search. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other colleagues have, have any comments? All right. Ms. Youngblood, have we done what we need today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I believe that we have as well. And I want to thank you. I want to thank Mr. O'Donnell. I want to thank our clerk and our attorney for being here with us as well today. Thank you so much. Colleagues, I believe that there is no more business to come before our body today. I will be thinking about the appointment of this committee, which I will do very soon. And I'll let you all know. And so thank you so much for being here. Thank you for our good discussion. I think we've made, made some good progress today that we needed to make. And we'll be meeting again all, all together about this very soon. So lots of special meetings to come. Thank you, and I'll,
Mr. Mayor, I might make one?
Yeah, sure, of course.
I'm sorry. Very quickly, maybe, maybe this might ease the process. Given the, the discussion we had, I, I don't need to be, if this makes it easier, to be on the committee, given the assurances that, you know, we're, we're going to be kind of passing information along. I know at least two other of my colleagues have expressed desire to be on the committee. So I just want for the record to say, I don't, I don't feel compelled or I need to be on as a committee, given the way the discussion's gone. So if that makes it easier for you, just wanted to put that in record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. I believe there's no more informa, no more business to come before this body this morning. And I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 11 o'clock. And thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Cantankerous.